Call the meeting to order, City Council of Esconaba, November 3rd, 2022. Mr. Demme, please call and roll.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Boschaw?
Here.
Commissioner Dubor?
Here.
Commissioner Flath?
Here.
Mayor Ammon?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united in the law, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, seeking approval and/or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting from October 20th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, seeking approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written, motion to add two items: discussion of possible closure of Water Plant Road to new business item number five, and approval of the letter of resignation from City Manager Patrick Jordan to new business item number six, then move closed session to new business item number seven after announcements and before adjournment. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This time, is there any conflict of interest that needs to be declared by any member of council pertaining to items on the agenda? Hearing none. At this time, we will hear brief public comment pertaining to items on the agenda. If you wish to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
I'm sure I come up here and now I'm gonna cough. Sorry. My name is Sue Parker. I am a business owner in downtown Esconaba, and I am currently the chairperson of the DDA Board. I just wanted to say that the changes to the DDA application process, this was a discussion, this came about from a discussion in one of our board meetings, which the mayor asked us to specifically, how do you want to say it, clarify who is eligible to be on the board. So we could form a committee consisting of Jared and Kelly and myself, and we went over the bylaws, we went over the state public act, and we created a new application form that we feel is good for us, that works for us, it's not a generic type thing. We also have a cover letter that we created to go with it, and we're not, I guess we're not trying to take away your job, we're just trying to make it easier for you. Thank you.
Further public comment at this time? Hearing none. We have no public hearing scheduled. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one, discussion progress regarding sale and development of jail and chamber sites. Administration?
Administration will update City Council on the progress regarding the sale and development of the jail and chamber properties, and Jim McNeil is here to give that update.
All right, Jim McNeil, I'm our city assessor. Happy to say that I'm as optimistic as I have been throughout this process from the start. I think it's in the best place today that it has been all along. Some reasons for that, I did meet with Matt from North Shore Flats today. The legal description, some easement language, still need a little bit of work, but we're on the same page, and we're happy to keep moving forward on that. North Shore Marine was in today, and we did execute the purchase agreement, so that is now formally moving towards closing. We're excited to see that get going. And Terrace Bay, there's been a, I call it a breakthrough in that development. As you know, the storm sewer issue was the major remaining obstacle. We didn't know if that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, or if it would be over a million, if it could be done quickly, or if it would take years of a permit getting buried. Lots of uncertainty, so, you know, as business owners do, Rick and Jared use their ingenuity to find an alternative. And I've talked with our engineering department, and we find that this is a very agreeable solution. What you see on the map here on the screen is the building, instead of the front or back of the building facing north or south, it would be facing the east now, and the canopy would be over North Third Street, so it would actually be over a different storm sewer, but a canopy over a storm sewer is not so restrictive. We can still get to it if there's a problem, there would be some new things to do. We'd have to look at vacating that right-of-way, there are still some bottom lands that would have to be acquired, and we're looking into, would that bottom lands acquisition have to be a state-to-city-to-developer process, or could it be state-to-developer? If it was the latter, we'd be able to move a little more quickly on this, but I'm happy to take questions on where we're at and invite Jared and Rick from the Terrace to fill in any gaps that I might have missed here.
Jim, how quick do you think we can move with the changes or agreements with Matt on those easements?
I think we could probably put a final purchase agreement in front of you at the next meeting. I think that's reasonable, assuming everything goes as expected.
Thank you.
And I guess to add with the Terrace group, we're kind of looking for council's approval of this concept, or support of the concept, and we'd be looking at something similar of getting the purchase agreement in front of you so that we could get this done, too.
Can we hear from the Terrace on any updates, if possible?
Yeah, just to throw in my two cents on this, you know, obviously you're trying to fit a building into this site, and we were always kind of looking at it from an overhead perspective of everything that needed to fit in, and then kind of just clicked with this canopy just needs four supports, this isn't a found, you know, that's the entrance canopy that people pull their cars under, it's not a founded part of the building. And so, we asked Jim if, you know, what the city would think about possibly straddling that part of the stormwater, and so that was, that was kind of where the idea came from, and yeah, I mean, as you can see, it just barely fits in. The county did have a utility easement, basically where those, where that line is on the bottom is within their utility easement, and, you know, almost up to the property line, but we did talk to them, and they said they would be amenable to this plan as well. So, yeah, basically, it's the only way the thing fits in there without having to move stormwater, so.
And you are closing on yours on November 22nd, correct, with the county?
With the county, yep. And, I mean, everything seems to look good with the city one as well, so.
Awesome, thank you.
I think it was a pretty ingenious solution to a huge problem.
No, thanks, yeah. I mean, yeah, honestly, just hadn't even been thinking about the fact that that canopy wasn't actually something that needed a foundation under it before, but, yeah.
Thank you, Jared. Mr. McNeil, were you indicating you were looking for council to give some sort of formal direction to pursue this?
I guess it doesn't need to be formal direction, we could bring the purchase agreement forward and look for approval that way. I guess this is to expose you to this new idea and talk through any issues that you might see, or just questions that you might have before having to take a vote.
Does this turning realignment, does that affect the easement or the property that'll have to be purchased back from North Shore Marine?
I believe the split would still be sought mostly for parking reasons. We do have an easement with North Shore Marine, and we probably would retain that for some time until we have a better long-term plan on stormwater in that area, but once, if it was found that the easement was no longer needed, we could always take a look at it again if they needed that land, but I'm sure Jared can speak to that split and acquisition more than I can.
If you look on the picture up there, basically the small portion that we're purchasing from North Shore Marine, if you look at those gray lines, you'll see there's a little triangle piece in the upper right corner there, and if you can ima, yep, you got it, right, in the very upper right corner, yep, that's it, right there. And if you can imagine, that's the entrance canopy, so you would drive through there, and you need to be able to get around the backside of the building, so that would still be needed to be able to get around to the back for people to park, obviously, so.
Are you able to give us an update on the that sales agreement with North Shore?
With North Shore? No, honestly, we were waiting until they signed a purchase agreement, which sounds like they did yesterday, so we're gonna chat with them about it.
Further questions from council? Anything to add?
No, we're good on our end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, item number two, approval, water treatment plant project, 10% construction contingency, water.
Administration is requesting City Council approval to make a contingency of $1,55,955 available with regard to the water treatment plant project that STAB is conducting for $9,783,000.
I'm not sure if we shouldn't have waited till after our closed session to discuss this, because that's kind of what halted this last time around, so maybe I should have addressed that earlier before we got to this point. Unless there's objections, waiting might be prudent, not that I have a problem, but there could be a problem.
I agree. We have to come back in the closed, open session after closed session anyway, so we can deal with it at that time.
So we're suggesting now moving unfinished business, item number two, to post-closed session?
Would that be considered tabling until?
That would be a table, because it's supposed in the meeting.
Yep.
Seeking a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, item number one, approval, changes to DDA application and appointment process, DDA.
The DDA at its regular meeting held on October 27th, 2022, is seeking City Council approval of changes to the DDA application and appointment process under PA 57 of 2018.
Do we have anyone here giving us explanation on this?
You want me to have Judy up here? Okay.
We have questions.
Any questions? Can I clarify anything?
Go ahead, Karen.
I, first of all, I, I understand why you did all this, but there's one part of it that might be illegal, and that's the appointment progress, and so I'd like to defer to the attorney so she can explain it.
First, I'd like to hear what it is that you're proposing by this agenda item. We are proposing, the subcommittee, what we did was we tried to clarify the qualifications to be on the board. We looked through the DDA public act, we looked through the state laws that we interpreted as them. The subcommittee then recommended that the control of the application and selection for our board be under the jurisdiction of the DDA. It was prior, it was like that years ago. The first time I was appointed to the board, I applied at the DDA office, and they then reviewed my application and turned it into City Council for approval and appointment. What we're just asking is that we thought we would make a subcommittee to be formed of five members, one being the city manager, one being the DDA executive director, and three trustees of the DDA board, with the executive director breaking any tie votes. When an application is submitted, it will be reviewed by the committee, and a recommendation will be brought to the City Council for approval, which is still required. Okay, that seems contrary to the statute, which is MCL 125.4204. This issue was just raised with me today, so I haven't had time to extensively research it, but I can see from 1254204 that the filling of vacancy, is that what you're proposing, filling of vacancy? Well, it says, "An appointment to fill a vacancy shall be made by the chief executive officer," which is, in this instance, either the city manager or the city managers designate from this body, which I understand is the mayor.
No.
Okay, so if the city manager isn't on the DDA, then according to the statute, he or she would have to designate a member of this body to represent the city directly on the DDA.
City manager, the city manager is a current voting member of the DDA board.
So if the city manager, as the quote "chief executive officer," is on the governing board, that an appointment to fill a vacancy shall be made by the chief executive officer of the municipality for the unexpired term. Plain and simple. Right? Well, that's kind of what I thought we did.
Let me see if I understand this. It sounds like the DDA wants to create a committee to make a recommendation of who could be appointed by the chief executive officer of the city to the DDA board.
Exactly.
That checks all the boxes.
But let me just. So, but the, I'm sorry, I have a question, too.
I know, there's some, let's start with Todd first this time.
Thank you. But the DDA wants to create their own board to determine who's gonna be on?
Let me clarify that. The DDA is creating a committee to make a recommendation for the chief executive officer of the city to make the appointment, which is exactly following all of those numbers that you read off, and I don't have them memorized yet.
So, so I think that process would work under one condition, which is that anybody who applies, if there's five people and the committee likes one more than the other four, they still have to present all five to the chief executive officer.
That's what I was going after.
I believe they can, with your recommend.
What, yeah.
So, so, just going a step further, so, using your example, if there's five and the committee picks one, then what happens if the CEO would prefer another one? Then who, you know, who's, who?
Then I think it has to come to this body for a vote based on the statute.
So then, the council would decide, if there was a disagreement between the committee and the manager, the council would decide which person?
We are not, we are not trying to tell you who to put on our board, we are trying to give you a recommendation of the person who is applying that is qualified and meets the requirements to be on the DDA board. The final decision is yours.
Okay, so many questions, we're gonna, you go to go first, then you get to go next, and then I might say something, and if I don't, then Karen can go next.
You mentioned the subcommittee and five members, I heard five?
Five members total.
But the DDA only has, what, seven?
We have nine.
Nine, okay. So why wouldn't the entire DDA be involved in the discussion? Why leave it up to a subgroup?
Because it's not violating any open meeting acts.
If you were to have it during an open meeting, you wouldn't be violating anything?
No, the committee would review it and bring it to the board. The board would then send the approval to the city.
Okay. Would all, all applicants for any board commission, they go to the clerk, the clerk sends them all to us? Would we still be getting all these, or would they all be going to the DDA?
We were proposing, we were proposing that it would go to the DDA.
Without council being in the loop right from the beginning?
If you want to be, I'd be happy to have you in the loop.
I think required that we be in the loop, so that when it comes to the City Council for the ultimate appointment, we know who else applied.
Sure. I can agree with that.
I mean, if the, you know, any board wants to make a recommendation, that's fine by me, it's just another, as long as this council realizes we're under no obligation to follow any recommendation that any board would give us, we're allowed to think for ourselves.
You still have something?
Well, I was exactly what Ron said, I agree with Ron.
Okay, that's good.
But the point is that if you have three people applying, I mean, you're saying that the DDA board that you want to change to is gonna be the governing body, gonna determine we're only gonna send one, if there's one vacancy, they're only gonna send one over to us and say, this is what we recommend.
No, I would say we would send all three over to you, but we would say, this is the candidate that we feel.
But that's not what that says. But that's, okay, that's not what it says, but I understand, that's the plan.
And if your committee is five, you have to have an open meeting, because that's a quorum, that's more than a quorum. Four would be a quorum, so if you've got five committee members, every time the committee meets, you have to have an open meeting. So, I think that keeping the control based on the wording of the statute with the council is the way I would. Well, one of the committee members is the executive director, he does not exactly sit on the board. He's employed by the board. All right, so you have eight members on your board, right? We have nine members, we have one vacancy right now. Okay, not less than eight nor more than twelve. And are you saying that the chief executive officer is now a board member? No, he's employed by the board. All right, I'll have to. The DDA, the DDA executive director. The city manager is on the board.
The city, is the city manager a voting member of the board?
Yes.
Yeah, so the city manager is on the board, that was your question?
Yes.
Yeah.
So he would be counted in the quorum.
Right, that's what she was saying, because he counted in the quorum.
Let's try this again. The Downtown Development Authority would like approval of the current updated application form, correct?
Correct.
City council is stymied on the language and the procedure for everything else suggested. However, I believe council might be willing to approve the new application.
Okay. We did create the applica, do you have a copy of it?
I'm looking at it.
Okay. We, we looked at DDA applications from Ishpraming, Houghton, Marquette, all other areas around us, and this is kind of borrowing one question from one and one from another to try to make this work for us.
And the effort to create a new application was?
By the committee.
I know, it's by the committee. The intent of creating a new application, or let's do it this way, Mr. Demme, what application form does a citizen fill out to join absolutely any committee in the city government system?
We have a boards, commissions, and committee application form.
We have one very vague, long, general form, and I believe this was an attempt on the DDA's behalf to clarify this a bit, and perhaps hone it to reflect what's needed for the DDA board versus what's needed for the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, or what's needed for the sanitation board, or anything else. I believe this was all done with good intent, perhaps we need a little more guidance, or we need apparently just so much more lawyer work. Mr. Mayor, sorry? Yes. I appreciate your effort on creating a new application for, specifically for the DDA. This is a project that is incorporated with the RSC certification as well, that we want to clean up applications to be more board-specific, and be more detailed towards what each board is looking for. So this is, in essence, moving forward with an application specific for the DDA. Is, in the end goal, that's what the RSC wants to, in the end result, clean up the application to be more board-specific. What expectations are for each board, what are you, what are you supposed to be doing? We want to clarify that with each board instead of a general application. So, in essence, you are moving forward to where the RSC certification needs to be.
So, in, in essence, you are moving forward to where the RSC certification needs to be, which I'm fine with the application. It's, it's, the other thing is the guidelines to it is what I'm concerned about. I'm good with the actual application form.
Are you making a motion to approve the application as a standalone document?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the, the application is, the application form is acceptable.
Question on regards to your form. I don't have necessarily that problem with the form either. Other thing I have a problem with on the form is that this only goes to the DDA. It should go to the DDA at the same time it comes to the city. It should be both entities getting a copy of that right away.
I would be fine with that.
Okay.
Normally, when we get an application in, it goes to all y'all, and then that administrative liaison. In that situation, it would be the DDA director.
But this application doesn't include that, it just includes-
Yeah, this new application-
Right.
New process.
So the only thing different then would be that the application is revised, but the application still goes to you first and still goes to us first, and then goes to the DD, all the applications go to the DDA for refinement, if you will? Is that what we're, is that what we're trying to, to do here?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just approving the application.
But he's saying the application says it goes to the DDA, and what I'm saying is that shouldn't the application follow the procedure for all the other boards? It goes to the clerk, it goes to us, and then it would go to the DDA if there is more than one, for them to discuss if this person is qualified?
We can change the line. It says, please return your completed application to the DDA office at 1025 Luddington Street. If you prefer it to be, to deliver it to City Hall, we could do that too. If that would be-
I think it would, it would be more, it would be consistent with all the other applications. And then I think it would follow the, more closely, the rules, the, the law, too.
Mr. DuBord, would you like to word your motion to include the change of language at the top of the form so that we can seek support for the motion, because we have had all of this discussion out of order?
Sure, I'd be more than happy to amend my motion. I amend my motion by accepting the new application that the DDA board has come up with, with the correction to the wording on the application to state, please return your complete application to the city clerk.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeMay, please call roll.
Constable DuBord.
Hi.
Constable Flough.
Yes.
Constable Moore.
Yes.
Constable Boshaw.
Yes.
Mary Amel.
Yes. Moving on to new business, item number two, approval, purchase of canine for Escanaba Public Safety.
Escanaba Public Safety is requesting city council approval to purchase a dual-purpose narcotic detector dog from Von Lisch Kennel to replace our current canine. The quoted cost for the canine is $20,275.78. This is not a budgeted item, but grant and drug forfeiture money will be used for this purchase.
Thank you. Our, our current canine is 12 years old, and the working life of a canine is usually 10, so he's, he's done his time, and it's, and it's time for him to retire. He's run into some medical issues here as, as of recently. The kennel that I'm asking that we buy the dog from, we bought our dogs from them for the last roughly 20 years, and they're second to none. These dogs are phenomenal, if you, if you watch them. The officer actually will go there for six weeks and be trained on how to use the dog, and then when he comes back, and, and to date, we just started trying to raise the money, and we have $11,500 as of this afternoon, and we just started two weeks ago trying to raise the money. So I'm, I'm asking that we get approval to, to purchase our, our new canine.
A move approval.
Support.
Any further discussion? Mr. May, please call roll.
Constable Boshaw.
Yes.
Constable DuBord.
Yes.
Constable Moore.
Yes.
Constable Flough.
Yes.
Mary Amel.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He's got the next item.
Next one.
Yep. I'll up again. Trying to give him a break here. New business, item number three, approval, mutual aid agreement.
Escanaba Public Safety is requesting city council approval to enter into the Michigan Municipal Aid Box Alarm System Association. This will provide the city of Escanaba resources from across the state in the event of a large emergency.
Yeah, this is just a, a much larger mutual aid agreement that goes across the state. And I guess the best way I can explain is like what happened in Menominee. And this really simplifies things, so if there's, something happens here, like, we'll say Menominee, super large fire, there was departments that were coming from Dearborn, we were there, Wisconsin was there. What this does is, is gives, gives everyone a, a big, a much larger pool for, for us to, to get, to get from. Resources, like there was high-volume water pumps. I'm trying to think of another incident, like when Gaylord had the tornado, search and rescue teams with canines, and, and they come, and it doesn't cost anything. You know, there's, and that's why if you, I don't know if you went through the agreement or, or not, but it's, if you had to pay for all these departments to come here, like the bill that Menominee might have got, it could get rather large. I think there was 60-plus fire departments there for two weeks. What this does, it gives us the opportunity to, to draw resources from, from the entire state, and us also to go provide. We went down to Menominee and helped them out. In kind, that I'm sure that if we ever run a new issue, they'll come and help us out
Motion to approve.
Support.
Further discussion on this item?
I was just going to mention, reading through the document, just so the public is aware, you do retain command, and if you feel that there's a need to recall the employees, the equipment, you do have that, that ability.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we have the right to refuse to go. We can leave at any time. We're not obligated to go, I guess. And that, that did happen in Menominee, they requested our ladder truck. Escanaba Township's ladder truck was already down there, and, and I, and I told them that we can't send our ladder truck also, because then it leaves Delta County without a ladder truck. They totally understood it, we sent a different truck instead to help them out, so, yep, there's, there's no obligation that we have to do anything.
Rob, my reflection is, is I've looked at this before, and you and I talked about this before.
Yes.
Correct this agreement?
Yes.
All right. Good enough.
Mr. May, please call roll.
Constable DuBord.
Yes.
Constable Flough.
Yes.
Constable Moore.
Yes.
Constable Boshaw.
Yes.
Mary Amel.
Yes. Thank you. New business, item number four, approval, stump grinding bid, Public Works.
Administration is seeking approval to contract with Dombrowski Tree Service at the proposed unit prices for stump grinding.
Currently, we have 161 stumps that we need to grind within the city, and I don't believe, I believe we've done this every other year, but this year, it's been a number because of all of the Emerald Ash Borer trees that have met their demise, so this would be a reallocation of funds from our budget.
Move approval.
Give support.
I guess, why did you choose Dombrowski?
Mainly because he's local, and this is the largest number that we've ever bid out. It's doubled from the last couple of years, so we know he has the equipment, he's around here, we know the job will get done by the, by the deadline, so.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, you mentioned equipment, what more than this stump grinder is needed to grind up a stump?
That's what we need. I'm not, you know, I've looked into some of the other bidders, and I'm not sure that they have the, the size equipment that they need for some of the trees that we have here, so.
I'm wondering, 160 stumps and roughly $80 per stump?
Yes.
70 or 80? Couldn't you buy a stump grinder for that total amount?
We could, but it wasn't in the budget this year. We've done stump grinding, we've always contracted it out.
So how are you going to pay for this if it isn't, if the grind, the grinding isn't?
We do, we have a professional services in our budget. They were, apparently it was for Emerald Ash Borer, but there is no plan to treat this year, talking with Joe Catlin.
Do you have a ballpark, what would a stump grinder cost? $10,000, $8,000?
Probably around $10,000 for a decent-sized one. And then all the work that comes with it. I mean, that's a lot of time.
But then you'll have it for the next, how long do they last? 10 years? 5 years?
I would say 10 years or more.
I see your point. I guess the concern is manpower, with all the other projects they have to keep up with, do we, can we spare the manpower to do the grinding of the stumps?
Yeah, that's, I mean, we've got a stack, probably this thick of trees that we still need to maintain. The, the trees in the city are getting old, so we're constantly getting phone calls on more and more to add to the list, so.
Would you prefer to buy a stump grinder?
I mean-
If you had the choice?
I guess that would be a, I guess that would be a good thing for our department, yes. But it wasn't budgeted this year, so.
Are you planning to grind these stumps yet this fall?
Um, this fall, yes.
How long would it take to get some estimates on stump grinders?
I mean, we could get estimates pretty quickly, I just don't know how, how quick we could get the, the equipment in.
Would you have the manpower to, to do it though, this year, to do it?
With snow coming up, probably not this fall. We would have to probably start in the spring.
Does that cause any problems for you?
What?
Waiting until spring to grind them up?
I guess, no, it'll cause a lot of phone calls, but that's, park for the course.
So you have 130 stumps to grind?
161.
161.
Oh, missed a call. And they'll be done before snow flies?
Well, they would be started, the majority of the larger ones would be started in the fall, and probably work through the entire winter as long as the weather allows.
Personally, I'd rather wait for some quotes to come back and at least consider what the price of a new stump grinder would cost. My opinion.
Mr. DeMay?
There is a motion on the floor today.
I know. Still no support. Motion fails. I guess you've got time to go shopping.
All right. Thank you.
New business, item number five, discussion, possible closure of Water Plant Road, Water Department.
Administration will update council on possible closure of Water Plant Road.
Evening. I've been talking about it at several department head meetings, asking everyone their thoughts on what we do when the construction begins. This is not a technical issue, but a pure political issue on whether we close the road when there's really not a great need for it until the actual digging and construction starts. So I feel, and advice of other department heads, that you should make the decision on closing the road for the winter, before we start making a hole in the ground that will actually close the road for real around April. We get about 100, 200 cars a day, makes a loop. Small number of people, if they're the same people, but closing that road won't come without phone calls.
So Jeff, you're drawing down the water table to work on those settling ponds or whatever they are?
Well, the settling ponds are pretty much above grade. Those are built four, five, six feet above water table, groundwater. We are digging, we're 10 feet deep now, we're gonna go eight feet below groundwater to, to get our base, our mud slab for our tank, so the dewatering is gonna occur, and they're gonna start building that mud slab and pouring concrete for the, for the con, for the tank, correct?
And you'll be drawing down the water table until when?
Probably for the next year and a half, until, until construction's complete.
So you're asking us to close the road for a year and a half?
I am asking you to make a decision instead of me, because there's a $7,500 option to keep it open for the next four months, or we save the $7,500 and close the road that's gonna be closed regardless around April.
Can the, the pipe or the hose or whatever you're using that is gonna go across the road or under the road, can it go on top of the road with something built on, on, over it so the cars can go over it?
All great options, all with costs. Nothing is free. We've discussed that, over, under, hauling in 30, 40 yards of gravel, it's a matter of maintaining it through the winter, and it's still only for a four-month window until the actual digging begins around April. That's gonna close the road regardless.
You are asking for the whole road to be closed from Memorial Drive to Water Plant Road right there?
I would suspect that we would close it at the end of the parking lot by the museum.
Okay.
But I would open that up with Public Safety, the engineers, and we would make a group decision on where and how the road was closed to best fit the needs of the city.
What diameter pipe are you planning to use?
I believe it's a 10-inch, 8-inch, whatever it is, a car can't go over it. So it's, it's not a-
Could you run-
It's a no, it's a no-win situation.
Being an engineer, I'm trying to come up with some other options. Could you run four or five 2-inch lines in parallel and cover them with some asphalt?
I'm not a whiz at hydraulics, but a 1-inch pipe versus a 2-inch pipe, I think you need three or four, 2 inches for the capacity of one, so it would take multiple smaller ones to, to overcome the needs of the larger diameter. Possible, that's another solution we haven't discussed, but again, we'd still have to pour, you know, gravel or, or fill over it and maintain that for four months until we actually close the road.
I have two questions. Until we actually close the road, and you keep saying April, so in April, that road is going to be closed regardless, correct?
Um, correct.
Until when?
Until the construction is, hopefully comes to a conclusion sometime in October or, or later, depending on the extension that we're, we're getting and the speed of the materials that we get. Materials may delay this a year and a half.
Okay. So it's going to be closed regardless at some point?
Correct.
That was question one. Question two. Regardless of what we build on top of the road, what happens when the snowplow hits whatever we put on top of the road? If we put gravel over it, if we put asphalt over it, if it's a bump, if it's a speed bump?
If, if we dig it down some, some-
I mean, can we do this and not worry about snow plows?
Um, no, there'd always be a worry. If, if we dig it in, well, we could, we could asphalt it, we could cold patch it and make it a plowable surface, but we would probably just leave it as gravel, I suspect, and they would have to maintain it through the winter for our plows until, until we close the road.
It would make a really neat bump. I'm just visioning this snow piling up on this unit.
And, and you know, the gravel idea, I, I think it has a lot of merit, 30, 40 yards of gravel or whatever we put in there, we can reclaim that and reuse it someplace else, it's not a loss. It's just the trucking, the time and the material to put it in there, and then the recovery time to do the same thing. STOB did not give us an offer or alternative for that. We would have to do that with city labor and time. And the construction project would likely not be able to utilize that gravel. Our, most of our restoration would be done by the time that dewatering is coming back out. That would just go, the gravel, if we did it, would, would just go to DPW or wherever to be reused through the city elsewhere, not necessarily the project.
Last question. I'm not equipped with the exact dimensions of that roadway right now. Is it wide enough for, on, on- Is it wide enough for, on, on this side of it, is it wide enough for two cars to pass if we were to blockade post-project, pre-project and let people still access the point to take their photographs?
Yes. Um, my problem with, with leaving it accessible to the end of the point is there are four or five parking spots on, on the east end of the point. Once when those four or five spots are filled up with parked cars, no one has the ability to turn around i- in the, in the roadway there. And if we get an elderly driver or something, that, they're, they're stuck. They're not gonna be able to turn around safely and efficiently.
Well, I tried, Jeff.
No, I, I, I appreciate it. Um, I've asked a lot of department heads, I've asked lots of people, and there is a no-win situation here. I wish there was an easy one. I, we could have probably made it ourselves if it was easy.
So do we spend seventy-six hundred to keep it open for four months? Or do we just get used to it? How tough are we?
I'll make a motion that we close it.
All support, so we can discuss it and. Further input?
So if we do close it at that intersection, at the end of the museum, there's enough room for U-turns and turnarounds?
Well, I, again, I'm not saying where we would do it. I would get the input of public safety, engineering. I would suspect we would do it at the end of the parking lot and not necessarily at the intersection.
Okay, okay.
And, and also notification and barricades at Jenkins Drive so that it wasn't through traffic and it was just people that was visiting the museum or parking to walk around the point.
So is it still gonna be accessible by walking around there?
Yes, the, the walkway was in the specs to have maintained, um, walkability. They are going underneath the sidewalk. That was spec. It was not spec to keep the road open because a good portion of that road will be taken out for construction, so they didn't feel it was necessary to spec at that rate.
So are you gonna be able to go far enough to, so people can turn into the harbor?
The harbor would be prior to the, to the.
To be open?
Correct. The harbor and the museum parking lot would remain open, uh, as far as I'm concerned.
So you are planning to go straight off the point, pretty much following the water intake?
Uh, no, where the, where the CDS Escanaba icon is, um, somewhere in that portion between that and the W is somewhere where the pipe's gonna be going across. Um, right up, right up that way north is gonna be the bypass, um, with the watering pipe across the road to the north.
I guess I'm wondering, rather than busting up asphalt to, uh, get the pipe under the street, would it be easier to dig up the yard, part of the yard and bury it in the yard and then come up back onto the blocktop and bury it in the yard and have the traffic actually put a little asphalt so they can go up the curbing and across the yard where the pipe is and then back down onto the street? Would that be possible?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of what you're.
What I'm referring to?
Right.
I'm a little confused too, actually. I tried.
Well, the pipe is going, say, from the middle of the property. It's gotta cross the road no matter which way you go, north, south, or, uh, off to the east. But as it exits the area that you're dewatering, I'm assuming it's in the yard somewhere.
Correct, it, it's inside the loop of the asphalt.
So as that pipe goes toward the street, I'm assuming you'll have ten feet of pipe, twenty feet before it hits the asphalt, before it hits the curbing?
No, that, that pipe is gonna extend all the way to the lake on the, on the north shore.
Right, but it, it's going across the yard, across the street and to the lake.
Correct.
So as it crosses the yard, is it possible to just trench that part, bury that piece of pipe?
That's what we're asking for, is the seventy-six-hundred dollars to make that happen.
But I'm saying not dig up the road, just dig a, a trench in the yard, one scoop, put the pipe in there, bury it in the yard, it, and then have it come up, go over the curbing, over the asphalt, over the other curbing, down the bank, into the water, but have traffic, so you don't have a speed bump. Have traffic just come up and drive.
Drive over the yard.
Drive across the corner of the yard where it's buried.
I, I, I was considering closing the walkway and rerouting traffic over the, over the, the walkway, the, the park, but now you're closing off the walk and making it a road. If, if you're talking about making that ramp on the south side of the road, there is not enough room. There's only four feet between the temporary fence um, and the construction there. There's not, there's not any room on the south side of the curb to do any of what you're saying. And, and, and the problem here is Monday, they're, they're coming to put their dewatering wells in and, uh, Monday, we're, we're closing the road for Monday, Tuesday for sure. Um, and possibly all winter, depending on what you guys decide, but to, to begin this work, we have to close the road for a couple of days just to get the dewatering wells installed.
I guess, do we have to make a decision tonight, Jeff? Like you have to know that we want to close this road for four months today?
Monday, the, the dewatering wells are going in and I need to tell STAB where they're gonna put their pipe. Below grade, above grade. We can make, we can make means, we can spend money to ramp it, gravel, temporary, um, take the manpower to maintain that. Uh, if we do that, that's all on our own manpower. Not looking forward to that. If it's a bad winter, DPW's gonna be plowing constantly. My guys are gonna be doing six to eight hundred agreements, uh, with the water work we got coming. I believe both departments could be very busy this winter preparing for the next construction season or a snowy season. Um, there are the options, you know, we can, we can do the gravel ramp. Um, but that's not free. Um, gravel costs money and maintenance is gonna cost money and manpower.
And then we still have to tear that up and close the road.
Correct.
Fully after that period regardless.
Correct. Without trying to overanalyze, you know, it would take a half a day to a day to, to build a ramp and it's gonna take a half a day or a day to recover it all next spring. And, and probably daily, um, maintenance to keep it decent, um, maybe every other day depending on how much traffic it gets and what kind of wet conditions. If it freezes, we're good. If it's, uh, wet and muddy, it's gonna be a chore.
The biggest complaints we're gonna get is from April to October because it's the summer and that's when people are out there anyway.
Well, that's why I've been asking the department heads what they thought about closing this road for a long time. It's far from an easy decision and it's a no-win situation. You're gonna, you're gonna make a lot of people disappointed, um, or you're gonna say, you guys save seventy-six-hundred dollars. I don't know how to tell you what to do. Um, I'm stumped and that's why I'm in front of you.
Okay, if we want people to have access to this and the concern is for those months, pay the seventy-six-hundred dollars. For, if, seventy-six-hundred dollars.
We do currently have a motion on the floor to approve closing the road at this point. If council is moving in the direction of spending the money, which we didn't want to spend when we first started this discussion, then we will need to vote this motion down and then make a new one to spend the money we decided not to.
So, but the bottom line is we spend seventy-six-hundred dollars to keep the, the road open for four months when it has to close for, for whatever, nine months.
Correct, we are closing it.
From April until October, which is the, the, the bulk, where the bulk of the traffic is.
Now, now bear in mind, if we have a very cold and brutal winter, April might move into June, depending on, on the construction delays. Um, or if they have a great winter, it might be a shorter spell and they might get better on the, on the construction and it might accelerate the, the schedule. Hard to say right now with the availability of concrete and the weather that's, that's coming.
All right, Mr. Demme, we have a motion on the floor. Please call roll.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Call Mayor Amel?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Bolsho?
Yes.
And Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
New business item number six, approval. City council will accept the letter of resignation by the city manager, Patrick Jordan.
City manager Patrick Jordan has given his letter of resignation for city council to accept.
Yesterday morning, Mayor Protemore and myself were emailed a letter from city manager Patrick Jordan stating the following. "I have received a job offer from another community and have accepted. My time with the city of Escanaba will end November twenty-seventh. Kathy and I are thankful and have truly loved making Escanaba our home for five and a half years and have enjoyed serving the residents of Escanaba. We wish Escanaba well and will miss the friends we made. We believe we followed God's direction when we came to Escanaba and we will continue to remember this community in prayer. Patrick Jordan, city manager."
Motion to accept the city manager's resignation.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Aye.
Councilor Bolsho?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. Who else would like to make a motion to make James McNeil interim city manager?
Support.
Further discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Just like to mention, you know, that there were a few others that I didn't have an opportunity to reach out to, but I think Jim would be a very good candidate at this point, so certainly.
Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Bolsho?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes.
Moving on to appointments. At this time, nobody told me how to pronounce this name. Which is unfortunate. It is K-A-S-J-A as the first name. Kasha?
Yes.
Excellent. And you've applied for the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee? Excellent. With council's approval, we'll appoint. Welcome and thank you. Also, we do currently have some vacancies if you would like to involve yourself further in our wonderful community. One vacancy Board of Equalization and Review, one vacancy Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy Historic District Commission, one vacancy Housing Commission, one vacancy Planning Commission, one alternate vacancy Zoning Board of Appeals. At this time, we will hear board commission and committee reports. You looked first, you're up.
I have none.
Good job.
I have none.
I have none.
I just, one thing, um, Solid Waste Authority Board, um, attendant, I just wanna remind people the plastic bags that you get at the big box stores are not recyclable. Please do not recycle them. They are not recyclable. Throw them in the garbage or bring them to the big box stores and put them in their, they have containers there for recyclables. Do that. That's it.
That's good information. I recently attended the DDA board meeting and they hired Craig Warple as the new executive director. This time we'll hear general public comment. Anyone wishes to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing none. Announcements. Yes.
So Monday was Halloween and I think this is a good piece of news. Uh, there's always lots of trick-or-treaters that go down Lake Shore Drive. One, one homeowner said she stopped, she had four hundred candy bars and she had to stop at six-thirty. Another homeowner said she had seven hundred kids. And so there were kids, wall-to-wall kids, up and down Lake Shore Drive, and on the corner of Forest Street, there was an officer and he sat there with his lights on and he was out there and he was greeting the kids and giving out candy and I heard one adult say, "Is that your costume?" I mean, it was, he was out there during the whole time and talking to everybody and I went up and talked to him and he said it was his, his own idea. And I thought it was fantastic, um, for the community and for public safety, so I just wanted to spread a little bit of good news and.
And Mayor Amel, something to add about the litigation pending in Delta County Circuit Court involving the utility poles?
Okay.
That I mentioned, gosh, I was trying to time it, probably a couple of months ago now, and, uh, safety bulletin was issued by the electric department, um, to all of the entities that have lawyers, lines and attachments under utility poles. And just as of last Thursday, Jerry and I were successful in getting a stipulation and order entered that I drafted. Um, and we kind of mediated between the litigants, the plaintiff and the defendant. And they finally agreed, it wasn't an easy deal, but they finally agreed to sign that stipulation and the judge signed it and ended it last, right?
Very good.
So that, uh, stipulation and order compels those two companies, the plaintiff company and the defendant company, to go out and do the repairs, to remedy, do the remedial work and remedy all the lines that have created a safety hazard.
Excellent.
In the, of the electric department, so that's good news.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't announce that the high school musical production of Sister Act that I am currently directing will be going up on November eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. Tickets are available at the high school office. Seeking a motion for recess.
Second.
On favor?
Just the two pages, I think it's important you guys.
Put that in your fridge, throw darts at it.
Okay.
It works.
You're live.
Back in open session, same item?
We are back in open session.
I'll make a motion to...
I wanted to state that no council actions were taken during closed session.
No council actions were taken during closed session.
I'll make a motion to proceed with this matter based on what Mr. Lampy had told us, with the information that he'll get from the city attorney at her convenience, whenever that is. If it isn't completed within a week or so, plan on it being on their next agenda.
I'll support that. Discussion?
Just to clarify, Mr. Bo Shaw, that I understand the recommendations that were given to give to the...
Yes.
Two companies?
Yes.
Okay, just so I was clear too. Okay, thank you.
Does your motion include starting with Jeff? Or going directly to our employer?
He had a plan, has a plan. He needs some information from the city attorney, but if he feels he can proceed based on what he has from the attorney already, he can proceed at his convenience.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. May, please call roll.
Councilor Bo Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Floth?
No.
Moving on. Back over to...
Item two.
Tabled item. Number two from unfinished business, we will address approval, water treatment plant project, 10% construction contingency, water.
Administration is requesting city council approval to make a contingency of $1,555,955 available with regard to the water treatment plant project that STAB is conducting for $9,783,000.
I don't know if you need questions asked, or I'll answer any questions you have.
The obvious one, based on what we just decided for the last item, do you still want to proceed with this, or what?
If we are going to proceed with the construction, we need contingency monies made available for change orders that arise. If I don't have contingency money, we're basically shutting the project down.
There's more than a 30-day time window from when any change order is presented based on the language of the agreement. So there's no urgency that goes along with it if there's not even a change order on the table right now.
There are change orders on the table, they're awaiting our response to proceed. If I may, I will hand out the workshop papers that we reviewed from Melissa and Jim. In great detail, this is what we discussed for hours. And this is where the contingency monies came from.
I don't need one.
This might not have worked, but this was provided in the prior one, and we spent hours... We spent hours, well, maybe not hours, but we spent a long time discussing it at the workshop, and again, Jim and Melissa went through these numbers, Darren drafted this chart, and this is where the contingency request is from. And I guess I'll go in a little more detail, I would like Darren to step up if you want questions about contingency, but in a normal project, if the project met budget, the contingencies would be covered as part of the SRF project itself, and it would be funded. However, we were above budget, we had to self-fund the contingencies. There was no funding agency monies there, our bonding limits were expired. I don't know if that's a correct terminology, but...
Yeah, I think, you know, there's, as you all know, there's a big part of this project due to the, what the bid came in at, that is going to be funded by the city. When we had our June 30th or June 29th work session, all of these numbers were discussed in great detail, including the contingency. When Jeff brought this, the bid for approval to council, he made an error, sorry, by not requesting the contingency at that time. It is the normal practice that when a project, or the purchase of a pickup truck, or whatever the case may be, comes to you guys, there is a contingency placed on the original agenda item that approves the bid, and that was missed this time. So that's why it's coming to use a separate item, which is not how you normally see them.
And Darren is here, if you'd like some backup information as far as this process, but I think I can answer most of your questions unless you want Darren to speak.
So these numbers are the ones we've gone through already, when we had that group meeting session?
Correct.
So nothing's changed in the number, you're just asking for the 10%?
That I failed to have in the approval of the bid bond, or the bid, to make the SRF deadlines that were looming. I think we met on the 30th, we had three days to put the package together and get it into Eagle's hands. To get all the grant money, the loan forgiveness money, whatever it was, whatever the monies here are for the free monies.
And you have enough in your water fund to cover this?
I'll let Melissa speak on that.
Yeah, this was all part of the, you know, the cash flows and rate discussions that we had included these funds. That was all part of the models that were presented in June. So the forecasting that we had done at that time includes these dollars. And I guess, you know, approving the funds, in my opinion, you know, Lisa's going to, you know, do her thing, and, you know, approving these funds, this isn't money that automatically is being given to the contractor. Some of these monies will likely be spent, hopefully not all of the monies. It's just for those contingency items that come up during the course of construction, so that the engineer and the department head can negotiate those with the contractor and keep the process moving. and keep the process moving.
Would you like to hear a few words from Darren, or?
I think just one thing to add from what Melissa and Jeff have said. Contingencies for this project with SRF and through MEDC, we have to get their prior approval to spend the contingencies. Even though it's not their money, we have to make sure that the scope of the project, the size of the project, the intent of the project is going to be the same as what we had planned. So we have to get prior approval from those agencies first as well.
Okay.
So this is, what's referred to as a stipulated price contract, the contract between STAB and the city. And I, one of the provisions in the contract, STAB makes an incontrovertible representation that without exception, all prices in the agreement are premised upon performing and furnishing the work required by the contract documents. I find the fact that a stipulated price, and that's contractual statement made by STAB, sort of inconsistent with a 10% contingency, without looking at each specific change order, and why it's necessary based on the contract documents.
We do look at each change order, and not all change order costs money. Often we get deducts on change orders. It goes both ways, it depends on how the flow of the contract goes, or the construction project. There's always, if you've ever remodeled a kitchen, I'm sure everyone's ran the Menards a few times to pick up stuff they forgot. This is a larger project, still more straightforward than the wastewater plant, but things are missed. There's a lot of documents, a lot of review, and things are missed, and change orders are necessary to keep the project moving forward. And that money is not their money, it is our money, it stays in the water fund unless it's approved via the manager. I agree to it, and like Darren said, SRF, CBDG agrees that it's a worthwhile change order.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Further discussion?
Just a comment, Jeff, a few meetings ago, we're willing to put your neck on the chopping block. Are you still feeling that way?
If the project goes wrong, I have faith in STAB, I have ultimate faith in them. They have given us very sound advice all the time. People make mistakes, the C2A engineers are going to make mistakes, my people make mistakes. However, the mistakes are overcome, they're worked out, and, yeah, this project goes sideways, you guys are probably going to say we're tired of you. But there's, there are things that are going to go wrong, and it's going to cost us some money to straighten them out. There's no, there's not a project out there that's not going to be straightforward without some hiccups.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Commissioner Dubois?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Flock?
Yes.
Mayor Ammell?
Yes. At this time, desperately seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Lisa, you only need this?
What does she want, this one?